Our meeting will come to order. Welcome to our October 24th Board Meeting. A special thank you to everyone who is here in attendance tonight. It's great to see a big crowd. We appreciate everyone's presence. I'm really excited tonight that we have some special guests from our Greenville County Schools Impact Leadership Cohort. They're here tonight as a part of their school leadership internship. And that's a part of our Grow Your Own Leaders program. And I'd like for those students just to stand real quickly and let us recognize you and show our appreciation for your presence tonight. Again, the Greenville County. Thank you so much that you're here. We appreciate the fact that you're interested in the leadership in the future of our district. Thank you so much. I would like to inform our audience that we just left executive session to discuss personnel matters, homeschooling applications, a physical education exemption, and to receive advice on leader matter, legal matters, including an employee grievance appeal, a teacher dismissal hearing, and engagement of outside counsel, and legal representation of an employee. No votes were taken. Our first item on the agenda is item 1.01, the welcome, the prayer, and the pledge of allegiance. I would like to ask everyone to please stand for the prayer and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. At this time, Mr. Jeff Cochrane will lead us in the prayer.
Thank you, Dr. Stiles. Let us pray. Dear Father God, as we come before you tonight, we first of all want to thank you for all of your blessings on our country, our community, and on our school district. Please help us tonight to listen with respect to the viewpoints of each person as we try to do what is best for the students of Greenville County Schools. We ask for your continued protection over our schools and our community, and please help us to remember to give you the praise for all the great things you have done for us. Amen.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cochrane. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Michelle Goodwin-Cowall if she would like to introduce our guests for the pledge tonight.
Okay, tonight we welcome Zeldon Payton II to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. A little backstory on this young man. Nine years ago, when Little Cell was four years old, he lost his mom to cancer. Kathy Payton was an English teacher at Jailman High School. After years of grief counseling and his love for writing, he became a published author. While a student at A.J. Whittenburg, he took his pain of losing his mom and coping for counseling to help other kids who've lost loved ones. His book is entitled The Good Mourning, M-O-U-R-N-I-N-G, A Kid's Support Guide for Grief and Mourning Death. Little Cell, who has his mom's smile, is an eighth grade student at Fisher Middle School. Zeldon is a true leader at his school. He is a principal's honor roll student whose favorite subject is social studies. He is also a three-sport athlete playing football, baseball, and basketball. In his free time, he likes to spend time writing. He is interested in a career in criminal law or criminal justice. He hopes to go to Greenville High School for their law program. His principal states Zeldon makes us so proud because he is such a hard worker and is generous and kind. He is a wonderful representative of Fisher Middle School. Zeldon is accompanied tonight by his father and mother, Pam and Zeldon Payton, his siblings, Ashton Kennedy, his grandparents, S.T. and Carolyn Payton, and Mary and Josh Singleton. Zeldon, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Thank you so much, Zeldon. That was a very inspiring write-up that Ms. Michelle Goodwin-Cowall shared about you. And Mr. Miller, thank you for being present. We appreciate your presence too. Mr. Miller is the principal. I would also like to take a moment just to thank Ms. Debbie Bush for our beautiful festive flower arrangement here tonight. That certainly brightens up the room, Ms. Bush. Thank you so much for that. We appreciate that. Our second item on the agenda is item 2.01, the adoption of the consent calendar. The consent calendar includes items 2.01 through 2.05. We have a recommended motion from the administration to approve the consent calendar as presented. Do we have a maker of the motion?
As presented.
Mrs. Levinas Wells has made a motion. Mrs. Goodwin-Cowall has made a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Our third item on the agenda is item 3.01, appearance of visitors. We have 17 speakers tonight. Ms. Bush will be sharing the speaking guidelines at this time.
Thank you. As each speaker's name is called, he or she should proceed to the podium at the end of the board's desk where there is a microphone and a light system. Each speaker has two minutes to speak to the board. The light system will be green for the first minute and will turn yellow when one minute remains on the speaker's allotted time. In keeping with board policy, KCA abusive language or personal attacks aimed at students or staff members will not be permitted. All speakers are expected to behave in an orderly and respectful manner. The board will not engage in discussion with the speaker or respond to comments. The superintendent will designate a member of the staff to respond to each speaker in an appropriate and timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Bush. Our first speaker is Chelsea Fleming.
Hello, I am Chelsea Fleming, and I am here today as an advocate for and former teacher of Lakeview Middle School, a place that is not subpar, but rather one that has provided growth, opportunity, and change for many, many students and teachers alike. The notion of replacing the hard-working teachers at Lakeview Middle School with more experienced educators is unfair and unwise. A teacher who is near retirement does not automatically equate to a teacher who will build a bond and invest in a child, inspiring that child to want to learn. The fact that Lakeview's teachers have been labeled as subpar is disappointing, and it's time that we set the record straight. A former Lakeview student, graduate of Greenville County Schools, and current Furman student said, "I enjoy my experience at Lakeview Middle School. Lakeview helped me affirm my calling in the medical field, fight social justice issues, taught me to go beyond statistics and stereotypes, and that we all have a purpose in life." Another student said, "All of the eighth-grade teachers I had knew every kid on our team. They allowed us to feel more comfortable. I loved the environment and how safe they made me feel." Lakeview's teachers are anything but subpar. They are warriors who have chosen to work in a school with challenges that would make others turn and run. They have taken it upon themselves to be not just educators, but pillars of strength for students in that community. The teachers understand the myriad of difficulties the students face daily, from socioeconomic issues, a wide range of learning abilities, and social obstacles. Please hear and heed the words of my colleagues today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fleming. Our next speaker is Tanner Woody.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Tanner Woody, and I spoke to the board two weeks ago encouraging you all to deny the Elevate initiative. Since then, the state report card has been released indicating that Lakeview Middle School has moved from an unsatisfactory rating to a below-average rating in 2023. Our state testing scores alone moved from an unsatisfactory to a below-average score in 2023 with a total increase of six points. Our students are moving in the direction they need to go without taking away Lakeview's autonomy as a school. Last meeting, teacher retention was brought to our attention. Excluding teachers moving to different areas of certification, teacher retirement, and out-of-district transfers, Lakeview Middle School only lost five teachers. As far as other interventions that were mentioned, we are currently without a behavior interventionist, three ESOL positions, an ID mod teacher, a self-contained teacher, a mental health specialist, a seventh-grade science teacher, and an eighth-grade ELA teacher. How effective can a school be when they are under-resourced and underrepresented in these meetings? What can an administrator do to support a teacher when the ISS teacher is being pulled to cover an ID mod class? How can a sped teacher be effective in their classroom when multi-cat classes are combined in order to fill a vacancy? These are questions that need to be considered when this model is being proposed because these are real needs that are not being addressed. Bringing in high-quality teachers is not going to fix the issue that we have. According to a study on if incentive-based models affect teacher staffing and student achievement in high-poverty schools conducted by the American Institute for Research, it was determined that, quote, "They did not find evidence that the bonuses resulted in detectable effects on student attest achievement," end quote. This study also used national board-certified teachers, and they still did not achieve results. However, the teachers are currently in the building are seeing improvements. Student achievement a jump from 20% to 25%. Student progress jumped from 25% to 37%. Lakeview has seen growth, and we have seen students overcome adversity. Support is asking the teacher, "What do you need from me?", and it is not standing in the back of a room with a clipboard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woody. Our next speaker is Ashley Vaughn.
My name is Ashley Vaughn, and I'm a resident of the Lakeview Middle School attendance area. I was born in this community, and I passionately believe that our students and teachers deserve no less than 100% of our support and resources, but the Elevate incentive model is not the solution. While research may show that teacher quality influences student achievement, it also shows that educational outcome disparities are directly tied to societal inequities. Toxic stress from ongoing environmental factors impacts neuroanatomy and brain function. It's not an achievement gap, it's an opportunity gap. Students in our community lack opportunities for success, and the bootstrap mentality invalidates their lived experiences. 100% of students at Lakeview receive free meals. The median household income in the San Suzy, Parker, and Berea communities is $34,000 a year, which is over the SNAP benefits limit for a family of three, which is the average family size in these communities. Per capita income is as low as $19,000 per year. There's lack of community access to stable, affordable housing, childcare, healthcare, well-paying jobs, and efficient public transportation. Many of our students are sent home on Fridays with backpacks of food for the weekends because school is their primary and sometimes only source of steady meals. Our students come to us with experiences that we will never comprehend, and we support them unconditionally and with every ounce of energy we can give. The number of multilingual learners and students who require special education is disproportionately higher than other schools, yet the Elevate model does not take into account the critical interventions these teachers provide that contribute to student learning and growth. Some people have told me that I'm making excuses, but these are factors that unequivocally contribute to student performance. According to data from this year's report cards, there is a very strong negative association between the poverty and achievement indices in Greenville County Schools. For those of you familiar with statistics, the correlation is negative point eight.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Our next speaker is Mark Shaduk.
Greetings, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to come and speak, and I thank you also for your service to the schools, the individuals, the families in Greenville County. And without your support, we couldn't do as much as we already do. So my name is Mark Shaduk, and Lakeview Middle School's been my second home since 2019, and I've seen many changes over the years. Notably, this year, the environment there has been much more positive until recently. I emailed some of my concerns about the new model, and I wanted to share some other thoughts before it's voted on again. First, according to the data from the 2023 report card, the following is true of Lakeview. 41% of the students are chronically truant. Therefore, they're missing critical instruction time. Only 64% of teachers returned between last year and this year. And there are five vacancies at our school right now. Actually, Mr. Woody expounded on that. So there are more than five vacancies at our school right now, specifically three ESOL, an eighth-grade ELA, and seventh-grade science. But most disturbing trend that I saw when I was looking at the report cards is even though only 25% of our students meet state standards for ELA and 10% met the standards in math, only 0.1% of the students were retained last year. So even with remediation during summer school, it isn't enough to make up the deficit. This only perpetuates the problem of underperformance. So I believe for the numbers to increase, as we all hope they do, and for these three things need to be in place. First, academic rigor. Second, stability. And finally, relationship. As Maslow would correctly identify, the latter two need to be addressed in order for the former to be effective. And I believe the Elevate model would appropriately address the former, but, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Shaduk. We appreciate it. Thank you. Our next speaker is William Davenport.
Good evening. My name is William Davenport. I'm going to format, not going to go to the formalities because we've got a reduced time here. There are two fundamental flaws with the current education system that need to be fixed before even thinking about putting the Elevate model in place. One, the school needs to address the longstanding policy of giving each child a minimum of a 50 for every test that they take, for every homework that they hand in, for everything that they do. They get a minimum of 50. We can't do that in real life. That's just unacceptable that we allow that. The second thing it's doing is those things are creating unrealistic life expectations and a sense of entitlement in our children, which is the worst thing that we can do for them. So the education that we're doing, that we're giving them is becoming an albatross to our children because they're not going to be able to get jobs working in our normal, in our public work sector. They're not going to be able to even pass a test required going to the military. I mean, it's just, we are just not giving them the education that they need. The second thing that's happening is that we're placing all students in the same classroom, even if their, you know, knowledge base is really wide. What that does is, is that brings down the entire education system for every student because our teachers are focusing, these teachers are focusing on those students that don't have the fundamental skills that they should have to be in that grade level. So we're taking these teachers, and we're asking them to do something that's impossible. We're saying, hey, we're going to give you kids that don't have the knowledge base in math and English, and we want you to teach them and make them better. Well, stop doing that. Stop passing those kids. Stop giving them a minimum of 50. We have to take and hold our kids accountable because if we don't, the world will when they get older. So I just think in summary that we need to change what is happening, and it absolutely needs to change. It needs to be profound and lasting, so it will impact every child in Greenville County. So we need to be able to address their physical and mental well-being of all children while understanding that the main purpose here is to educate those children.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Our next speaker is T.J. Rummler.
Good evening, board members. I want to thank you for your service this evening. My name's T.J. Rummler. I'm the former trauma-informed specialist for this district, so I know many of you, and I'm currently serving with the Hispanic Alliance as the Director of Leadership Development. And I'm here tonight to speak about Elevate on behalf of the Hispanic Alliance, and I'll read if you'll allow me. We acknowledge that Elevate has very good intentions with the goal to serve all students and improve academic outcomes. We want to thank you for that intention. And if it passes, we would ask that you consider a few things throughout implementation. One, as many people have mentioned, these two schools have a large, in fact, majority number of Hispanic and Black students. And many of these students and their families have very complicated histories with our school system, in fact, many systems in our community. These communities have been historically overlooked and underserved by many of the policies and practices that we have, and many of those were implemented before all of those. They precede the majority of those that are in this room. So if we decide that this is the right move, it does provide an opportunity to move towards some more equitable school environments if we choose that intention. It is important to recruit staff, regardless of Elevate or not, who are culturally competent and humble, and who can reflect the diversity of the student population. We know that when students see themselves represented in the staff in the building, they're more likely to feel safe, and they're more likely to be ready to learn. It's also important to consider that these changes could have impact on the psychological safety of the students in the building. A lot of the students at these schools are here without documentation, and those families and those students right now have what many of them consider are safe people, safe peoples in the building. And if this program is implemented, it could shake that up. You know, if there's a large-scale change in the population and the staff and the students in the schools, then those people could lose their safe person. And we know that when students feel safe and supported, as Ashley mentioned, they're more likely to succeed academically. The things that happen when stress impacts the brain, when toxic stress and trauma impact the brain, students are less likely to succeed. And this could add to additional anxiety and stress. And I'm happy to provide some suggestions on behalf of HA if you would like.
Thank you, Mr. Rummler. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ariann Warren.
Hi, I'm Ariann Warren, and tonight I would like to speak to you on behalf of the Blythe Academy French immersion program. Not too long ago, Blythe Academy was a failing school back in the 1980s. Parents and community members worked together to keep the doors at Blythe open in an attempt to preserve the integrity of the neighborhood. In 1995, Blythe was chosen to become a select magnet school that focuses on language immersion instruction in French and Spanish at all elementary grade levels, and the name of the school was changed to Blythe Academy of Languages. This change brought greater parental and community involvement and increased the diversity of the school and surrounding community. I will share with you my personal journey with Blythe. We chose Blythe because I was born in Canada, and I spoke French up until I was 14 years old and moved to Greenville. And I wanted my children to be able to have the opportunity to learn the culture and the language and to be able to communicate with family members that still live in Canada. So my oldest began at Blythe in 2012. And so we live near Woodmont, and we made the drive, that's nearly 40 minutes round trip, for 11 years. And so that's serious commitment, but that's a commitment we were willing to make because of the value of the program that it offers and it teaches my children. My four boys have each become students at Blythe, and so far, two of them continue the program at Greenville Middle Academy. On October 16th, some of the parents of the French immersion program found out that the school administration is considering phasing out the essential program starting next school year. We were shocked. We feel as if the school we trusted for so many years is crumbling under our children's feet. We are very concerned about what this means for our kids who are currently students of the program, as well as the teachers who we have come to love and trust as valued members of our community. My youngest son is in first grade.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Our next speaker is Joanna Castillo.
Hi, my name is Joanna Castillo, and I'm going to try to talk really slow because I'm terrified of public speaking. I can speak in front of many, many students, but adults, and I am a little frantic. But I thought it was important that I would be here and that I would speak, and that I would be brave because I'm not here for me, I'm here for the kids. Lakeview is magic. I don't know how else to say that without saying it. And Lakeview doesn't become magic by accident, it's because of all of the people in the building. Some of the things, like, I know that we look at report cards and numbers, but like some of the kids that we receive at Lakeview, they might come to us in August, and they don't speak a bit of English. But by December, they're having a full-on conversation, they're giving handshakes in the hallway, and they're able to talk with you. Now, that might not mean that they do amazing on a state test, but it means that they're growing and making relationships with adults and peers alike. It also means that at Lakeview, there's a lot of kids who carry a whole lot of baggage. And a lot of the times, the baggage has to be addressed before we can begin anything academic. And that might look like something, like a score too. But that doesn't mean that Lakeview isn't magic and that all of the people in that building don't contribute to the positive, amazing, healthy relationships that we give to those kids. I don't even know what else to say other than, yeah, that's it. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo. Our next speaker is Suzanne Billings.
Good evening, Dr. Royster and members of the school board. I'm Suzanne Billings. I'm the school counselor at Augusta Circle Elementary School. I'm currently serving in my 25th year as an educator. I'm a proud parent of four children who have attended and graduated from Greenville County Schools. I'm also a member of Teacher Forum. And in fact, tonight, we have several members of Teacher Forum, as well as teachers within the district that I would like to recognize. If you're a teacher in Greenville County School, if you will stand and be recognized tonight. I recognize these teachers because we are passionate about public education and about positively advocating for teachers and educators who serve our public schools and communities with their professional expertise. In fact, as Teacher Forum, we spent all day today in a Teacher Forum workshop to grow ourselves professionally and learn together with district personnel, with Dr. Royster, with Mr. Jeff McCoy, with Ms. Morgan Clements and Ms. Julie Horton, and also with PEPs, our public education partners, Kathryn Schumacher. I want to take time tonight to thank you as our school board members for continuing to be curious about our needs as educators and to work with us to support our needs and the needs of our students. I thank you for recognizing the value of teachers, new teachers, and the recruitment of new teachers, but also valuing veteran teachers and educators like myself who have who can. of new teachers, but also valuing veteran teachers and educators like myself who continue to serve throughout the ups and downs, trials and tribulations of our students, communities, and educational challenges over many years. And thank you for keeping our public school students and children at the center and heart of your decision-making.
Thank you, Ms. Billings.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Bronwyn Grant, and I have dedicated my life to at-risk youth. For 25 years, I was with the Middle School Alternative Program, and during COVID and after COVID, our numbers rose so much that I thought that I needed to move to the middle school because the need was so much greater than it ever had been. And I came purposely to Lakeview because of the magic that Nicole Puzza and Avid created, and it was absolutely everything that I thought it would be. I'm concerned that we have been characterized as over-resourced because nothing could be further from the truth, and I'm proof of that. I was hired as a reading interventionist in science and social studies and was thrilled to do that because science and social studies get no support. And I have not been able to do my job in the two years that I've been there because we are so under-resourced. I have taught science, I have taught social studies, and now I'm teaching ELA. And even with the incredible under-resourced climate that we have, we have grown by six points, y'all, and we were only three points away from being an average school. So even with all the trauma, even with all the under-resourcedness that we have, I don't know if that's a word, we have still shown growth. So I implore you to change your mind and let us do what we do because that magic is real. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Our next speaker is Cecilia Carpenter. Cecilia Carpenter?
Je suis dans la classe de 2027 à Woodmont High School. J'ai commencé à Blythe dans le programme français dans la classe de 2014.
Bonjour, je m'appelle Elja Dindi, et je suis en neuvième classe au Greenville High School. J'ai commencé à Blythe dans le programme français dans la classe de deuxième, et j'ai passé au niveau français deux au Greenville Middle Academy. Je suis avec dix de mes amis et camarades de classe.
Elja and I went through the Blythe French Program, continued French immersion at Greenville Middle, and graduated last year with 10 of our friends and classmates. Within our class, we had kids from Ecuador, Mexico, France, Papua New Guinea, and of course, America. Having kids from all of these different backgrounds in our class really helped us to, like, learn to enjoy the diversity in our world and, like, be friends with people who aren't exactly like us. None of us were super rich, and we all came from different backgrounds, so Blythe was one of the only ways we were able to learn French. It was a really great option the school systems gave us, and we're super grateful that we had that option.
Learning another language is not an easy thing to do, but it has given me a huge advantage over my classmates and friends at school. As a freshman, I'm already in the French III honors, and when I apply for college, I know having honor credits on my transcript in a high-level French class will look really good, and I will be able to get a seal of bilingual literacy on my diploma to help celebrate all my hard work. Having French will set me apart from all the other kids and give me an edge both in college and someday in the world of business.
So the French and Spanish class, it does look like we have lost a lot of people, but in reality, we haven't. It's just our French classes start a lot smaller.
Merci pour votre temps et attention.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Nicholas Philippe. I'm a French teacher in Greenville County Schools. I've been a teacher for almost 20 years. I spent 10 years of my life teaching English in France, and then I moved here to start teaching French. I currently have two children in the Blythe Language Immersion Program, and my wife and I chose to move to that, to our house specifically for this program. Two years ago, I emailed the principal of the school because I knew there was a French teacher position available, and I was told that even though I was K-12 certified in French, I could not, I have two master's degrees and I'm currently working on my doctorate, I was not qualified to, or not certified to teach at Blythe. This past year, another position came available. I emailed the principal again and was given the same answer. In the district, I know of at least two French native speakers who are currently French teachers who would be willing to come and teach French at Blythe to save, to help save the program because it seems like the main point that we're given is the difficulty to staff the French positions. In reality, really, all it would take is, Blythe being such a unique school with such a unique program, the certification should be changed slightly and just allow people who are certified to teach French to be able to teach in an immersion program. Through Michelin, we have, our community has such strong bonds with the French language, and we see this tonight with all the people present. We also know of a teacher at Blythe currently who started, just as I did, with the French certification and was allowed to start teaching there and then get her certification through her teaching year. So I just ask for time.
Thank you, Mr. Philippe.
Hi, thank you so much for being a part of the board. I know that the work that you do is such important work, and we really appreciate that. My name is Lynette McMaster, and I have been a teacher at Lakeview for, this is my eighth year. I've taught special education inclusion, I've taught Multicat, I've taught Avid, and now I'm teaching ID mod. So today, as I walked into the Teacher Forum, it's the first time in going on eight years that I had to put on a Lakeview Middle School and felt embarrassed. So when I walked in, I thought that other people were going to be looking at me, the other teachers, and saying, there's a failing teacher. Because the way that it was presented to us was presented in such a way that when we walked out that day, you're making me get emotional, well, the next day when I was in my classroom, I heard kids walking in the halls outside my room, and I heard comments from the students saying, did you see on the news, we're in the bottom 4%? Did you know that our school's failing? And I was hearing that, and it just grieved my heart. The notion that our school is failing due to poor instruction on the part of the teachers, I think insults the caliber of our teachers. Over the past years, I have worked with some amazing educators at LMS, and the school has been failing since I have been there. We've had 12 different administrators and numerous instructional coaches. How is this lack of stability good for our school? As employees in the field of education, we are all aware of how important early literacy is and know that a language-rich environment is key to academic achievement. I don't even have to address all the difficulties that arise from the language barriers. Our students deal with poverty, abuse, neglect, and a narrow view of the world.
Thank you, Ms. McMaster. Thank you very much.
My name's Elizabeth Bailey, and for 15 years, I had the privilege of being a teacher, media specialist at Alexander. But since I've just retired, I had the opportunity to look at this Elevate proposal through the lens of being a community member. And the impression I got from the publications, from the news media, was that every teacher at Alexander was a failing teacher, like has been stated, when we know that's not true. But that's what, in the community, I believe, has come across. From a former person at Alexander who invested 15 years there and who loves the school, I hurt for my co-teachers because I think I would have felt, and I do feel, demoralized, demeaned, and kind of just kicked to the curb. And please, please know that the feathers are out, like in a bag, and you can't take that pack. But we have some of the best teachers at Alexander, and I just hurt for them, and I don't know how to fix it for them.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Our next speaker is Edward Anderson.
Hi, my name is Edward Anderson. I come to you today as a former Lakeview teacher, principal of Greenville County Schools, district academic coach, parent of two Greenville County School students, spouse of a Greenville County School teacher, and executive director of On Track Greenville. As a Title I middle school principal, I understand firsthand the unique challenges that are faced when serving communities of concentrated poverty. The invisible backpack of trauma, transportation challenges, housing insecurity, lack of resources and quality health care, a county-wide shortage of mentors, disjointed communities, language barriers, and a fear of acknowledging the systems and policies that perpetuate disparity are just a few of the issues. The disparities that exist in Greenville County as a whole are some of the worst in the U.S., with less than 5% of people of poverty exiting poverty over the last 30 years, and less than 2% if you happen to be born Black and male, one of the bottom 10 counties in the country to move out of poverty in. It makes sense that some of those same deeply embedded challenges in our community make their way into our schools, and nothing significant and sustainable will happen without strong community partnership. Working in high-poverty schools for the last 16 years has taught me that those individuals work as hard as they know how to face, how to, facing some of the deepest challenges in our community. While I've also encountered some ineffective educators during that time, I have also encountered some of the best, most caring administrators and teachers that this state has to offer. Over the past eight years, On Track Greenville has leveraged its partnership with the school district, philanthropists, national programs, and Department of Education to provide over $15 million worth of supports, including mental health, full case management, On Track facilitators, adoption of mentor upstate, to recruit more qualified mentors, trauma-informed specialists, and so forth. As Greenville County moves forward with this process, On Track Greenville remains committed to the students, staff, and families in our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Our next speaker is Summer Phillips.
Hi, my name is Summer Phillips. I'm a first-year social studies teacher at Lakeview Middle School. I chose this school because I believe in the mission of Dr. Puzza and I want to be a role model to our kids that need support. I'm proud to say that my students are excelling against all odds. These are the students who are often labeled as not testing good enough. I firmly believe that with the right support, resources, and encouragement, they will continue to excel. While I may be a first-year teacher, I bring over 20 years of experience and education from Clemson and completing my MAT and teaching middle-level social studies. I'm qualified, along with so many others. From what I've observed, it seems that the district has not made significant efforts to support Lakeview Middle School. There are several areas of concern, but one that stands out to me is the lack of a behavioral system or an ISS program. This is due to lack of resources. My responsibility as a teacher is to protect the learning environment and ensure the safety of the students who want to learn. I have many bright and talented students who will benefit from a disciplinary system by providing strong support. I believe the learning environment will be protected and conducive to learning and allow the exceptional teachers at Lakeview to teach. Another concern is the lack of substitute teachers. When a teacher is out, it becomes challenging to maintain the same level of rigor, instruction, and engagement. Having enough substitutes would help alleviate this issue and ensure that students continue to receive quality education. I appreciate the hard work and dedication of our exceptional administrative team. However, they need support. It is disheartening to hear that the proposed solution to these issues is simply offering teachers a monetary boost or an extra contract or extra PDs or extra additional observations. The boost is expected to find veteran teachers. However, we are the ones here every single day. While financial incentives are important, they do not address the underlying problems we face. I want to also emphasize that our teachers are not trying to flee their classrooms or abandon the school. We are here because we love our students. Despite the rumors and negative perceptions surrounding Lakeview Middle School, these children, just like all others, deserve the best education and support possible, and that does not include a new staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Our last speaker is Benjamin Frick. Benjamin Frick? Okay, I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Frick. I'm a seventh grader at Charles Town Center. My parents didn't write this speech. These are my own personal thoughts. Today, I would like to speak about freedom of religion. My mother is Christian, my two sisters are Christian, three of my four grandparents are Christian. I'm an atheist. We started this meeting with a prayer. How is this fair? 3.8 billion people don't believe in the God we pray for, in the Constitution of the United States, which is the highest law we can follow. Everyone has the freedom of religion, yet people start meetings by saying a prayer. Many, many people aren't Christian, yet we are forced to grit our teeth as others preach their beliefs in an unrelated scenario. Even in the Pledge of Allegiance itself, we say, "One nation under God." If I must stay silent during the pledge, I will because I am a firm believer in the Constitution. The document itself gives me the permission to do this in the First Amendment by saying I have the right to petition. It is the little things over time that really get to me. Every single day, I have to listen to people, make mentions to God while something completely unrelated is happening. Sometimes even arguments start up over people's belief in their religion. The straw that broke the camel's back was when I listened to this last meeting. Multiple people only talked about God on a school board meeting, a school board meeting. We're wasting our time trying to spread religion. What I knew, when I heard, I knew I had to stand up. If you're a Christian, and which I'm sure many of you are, I'm not saying to stop practicing Christianity. I'm glad you have a belief system. I respect that. My issue is the people who take it to a whole nother level. So go ahead, be Christian, but don't try to teach it to me and my classmates in school. They have the right to make their own decisions without others' influence. In conclusion, I think we should be very careful about how religion is included in the school system and to make sure belief in religion is not part of the curriculum.
Thank you so much, Mr. Frick. Our next item on the agenda is item number 4.01, and that is the superintendent's report. Dr. Royster, you have the floor.
Thank you, Dr. Stiles. In the interest of time this evening, we'll omit the superintendent's report so that you can continue on with your action items.
Thank you so much, Dr. Royster. Our next 13 items are action items. Our first action item is 5.01, employee incentive model. We have a recommended motion from the Committee of the Whole to approve the Elevate employee incentive model concept and designate 4.5 million from the general fund/fund balance to provide the difference in compensation and bonus. Dr. Royster, would you like to speak to this? Dr. Royster, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, just briefly, Dr. Styles. We did a pretty full presentation on this at the Committee of the Whole. We've since answered quite a few questions. They're published as a public document on our website. Questions that originated from the faculty, questions originated from the board, questions that may have originated from the community, and anyone can go online and see those responses and answers. I think if you took, if you take the time to do that, make the time to do that, speaking now to people who were not present at the Committee of the Whole, probably would clarify some misconceptions about it. What we're looking at here is a pilot, initially, including two schools, elementary, one elementary and one middle, both Title I schools. We traditionally, and this is not limited to Greenville, not limited to South Carolina, common all over the country, generally speaking, schools that serve Title I communities struggle to attract and retain teachers. We are unfortunately uniquely in the position, particularly with one of these two schools, that it is in such a status within our state accountability system, that being Lakeview, that one more year will result, one more year not moving out of the status, will result in the state taking over that school. Alexander, the other school, is not quite to that point, but it has had significant achievement challenges as well. Merely the fact that a school might improve their score some is not sufficient to take them out of that status, as you all are well aware. We've tried a number of things, and in fact, historically, in some cases going back 20 years, these are schools that have struggled with their performance when compared to similar schools in our district and our state. We don't run the comparisons for all of our schools. We run the comparison to other schools that are like them demographically. So when we run comparisons from Lakeview, or Alexander, or any other school in the district, we compare it with a band of schools within the district and all over the state that are very similar demographically. One of the common themes that I heard tonight, one of the common themes that we understand, is we have some vacant positions, going back to the fact we're having difficulty recruiting and retaining personnel. We've heard, and we know, and we've posted the research, you all have seen it, that there are very limited circumstances where simply a bonus is proven effective. We spent nearly two years on developing this model, and most of that time was spent on the front end, in that first year, looking at the shortcomings of every one of those models, and putting forth a model that attempts to fill every hole that was identified. Some of the common ones are, the models pit one teacher against another teacher. This model doesn't do that. The models deal solely with student improvement as a whole. This one doesn't. It looks at a student, where that student is when they come into the teacher's classroom, and where they are when they exit that teacher's classroom. Individual improvement based on where they are, where they go. Other models don't provide any financial reward for all the school staff. Well, everybody contributes to the success of students, not just the teachers in the tested areas, not just the teachers as a whole, the bus drivers, the food and nutrition services workers, clerical personnel, the aides. All these people contribute to the overall success of a school. That was another shortcoming of other models. Some of them were solely bonus models made based on, you get better academic results, you get some more money. Others are just to pay people to serve those particular schools. This combines both aspects of those. This model also recognizes that while we firmly believe there are excellent teachers in every school in this district, including these two schools, it sets a level playing field for those people to choose to apply to be a part of this, and for others in the district or outside to choose to apply to be a part of this. It's different, it's innovative, it has a different set of challenges with it. We want people who want to be a part of it. It may move teachers to other schools, but it does not remove any person from a job. It might simply change the location of that job. While we started with these two schools, the intent would be, this proves to be successful, could then be expanded to other Title I schools to assist with retention and recruitment by paying additional base pay, recognizing some of the significant challenges in those communities. The possibility that the bonus part could also be extended to Title I. It could also be extended to all schools in the district if it's successful. Requires, all those things require some level of funding. The bulk of the funding for this, the extra pay for the personnel assigned there, comes from a Title I funding. The bonus part is the amount that we've requested you vote on, the overall concept of the program and the bonus amount to come out of the fund balance allocation. We have tried for multiple years implementing strategies that have proven effective in similar schools, and those strategies have not produced the results they need to produce to move these schools where they need to be, to remove the status that they have attained. If we do not act decisively, if we do not act differently, then we are leaving ourselves with little to no hope to avoid a state takeover of one of these two schools. But more importantly, are we academically providing for the students in those schools all that we can provide for them? There are many challenges, there are many obstacles, and there are many barriers that students coming from deeply impoverished communities experience. That certainly calls for empathy and caring, but that has to also be paired with rigor, There also has to be a consistent and strong framework for discipline, which requires every person in every role in that building to carry out their part of that. That responsibility rests not only with the administration, not only with the assistant principals, but also with the teachers, with the counselors, the mental health counselors. It requires a partnership of every adult in that building, operating within a framework of clear expectations, clear consequences, and the opportunity to counsel students to different choices and better decisions, but also understanding that they have to suffer the consequences of violating the rules when they do choose to do so. All of those things come together at one juncture to ensure that you have the kind of environment, the kind of culture, the kind of expectation, the kind of caring, all combined, that provides the greatest opportunity for students to gain the most. We also know that coming into schools that are feeding, particularly Lakeview, the level of performance is higher where they come in. We also will understand there's a consequence as they exit, and how prepared they may be for high school. Also, Alexander serves as one of the feeders. It is not the largest feeder, but one of the feeder schools for the students coming into Lakeview. So it's even more critical that that particular feeder be strengthened, because it obviously also impacts the middle school, just as the students exiting the middle school impact performance and have challenges that they carry with them to high school. This is obviously not an easy decision. It was not a proposal that was hastily created. It's not a proposal that was not thoughtfully considered, and it is obviously something that creates great concern on the part of individuals that are affected by it. But we also have tremendous concern about what may happen in one more year. And when we look back in a 20-year period, we have, we're, what we see when we look back in that 20-year period is consistent low performance, and I do not believe it is proportionate to the effort, or the commitment, or the caring of the people working there. No one questions their caring, no one questions their commitment. But what we're not seeing is the effectiveness that is translating into improved performance. We should not have schools, we should not have schools in our district that are in the bottom 5% of all Title I schools in the state of South Carolina. We believe this offers an opportunity to move away from that. It's obviously very different, it's very challenging, it's obviously very concerning to people. But it's extremely concerning when we're looking at a school that may be taken over by the state of South Carolina. That doesn't rise to the standard of what we should expect, what each of us should expect from ourselves. Dr. Styles?
Thank you very much, Dr. Royster. Again, we have a recommended motion from the Committee of the Whole to approve the Elevate Employee Incentive Model concept and designate 4.5 million from general fund/fund balance to provide the difference in compensation and bonus outside the Title I allocation for the purpose of the four-year pilot program. This motion does not require a second, any discussion. Ms. Laventus Wells?
Well, it's amazing that we had so many speakers here tonight, because during their presentation, they asked, or they answered, a majority of my questions that I was going to direct to Dr. Royster. However, there are a couple of things that I'd like to just touch on. At the end of the first year, COVID hit was not our school's best friend. But what happened at Lakeview, and maybe many others, it caused students to have to go online and do their work. Well, that following year after, and it didn't matter what happened, whether those students did anything or not, they passed. No matter, no matter what their performance was, the goal was to move forward. And the following year, there were a few that taught entirely in a virtual setting, and only about a half of the class would log on, and no more than 10% of the students actually participated in the class activities. Even so, passing was once again the only option. Just when you think it can't get worse, it can. I'll just put it this way, Dr. Royster. We heard how they qualified for so many additional positions, but they haven't been filled. They had an ESOL teacher that lasted maybe almost not quite the first nine weeks. Positions have not been filled. Discipline is such an issue, and I think we have to address the educational challenges of students. There are students who are maybe a nuisance in class. The behavior, the behaviors have been addressed, and corrective measurements were taken, but the disruption continued. In one teacher's class, there were two students that finished last year with over 50 referrals. However, nothing could really be done since they were protected by the IEP. I might have gotten something right. With that being said, are there teachers in that school that should be gone? I'm sure there are. Maybe they've been there too long, maybe they're burned out, maybe they need to move on, maybe go to a different school. But those teachers that we heard from tonight, and those teachers that we haven't heard from tonight, that love these children, even though they throw tantrums, they're not happy, we don't know what kind of life they're living, because we're not living their lives. We're just trying to help them be just like the student that came up here and said, "I went to Furman, I do this, I do that," and you break through to that student. I'm not, I don't feel this. $5,000, we're going to give these seasoned teachers $5,000 to come here and teach, and if they're close to their retirement, this would go towards their retirement, the last three years. I think that's great, but they're not going there for the right reasons. With that said, that said, I want these teachers to go there because they want to, and because they have a love. You send a teacher there that was teaching in this, this school that they'd been teaching at for 10 years and loving every minute, and you send them to Lakeview, and they have to deal with all of these behavioral issues, these IEPs, they have no clue what they're walking into, they're going to do just like this ESOL teacher. They're going to walk out and leave them with not enough people in place. Now, you know, I remember, I think it was in... Now, you know, I remember, I think it was in, it was 2015, 2011, 2013, I can't remember what it was. I was involved in the schools very heavily. I think it was called the TAP program. And I don't know if I wrote, I think it was, I think it gave money or incentives, it was, it was in Beaufort. You may have remembered it, Dr. Royster. But what it was, it was used to reward and retain effective teachers who serve minorities and diverse disadvantaged students. And that was in Beaufort, South Carolina. Okay, so where is the TAP program today? It's non-existent. So with that being said, let me tell you, I will try anything, I want these, both these schools to be successive, successful, Alexander, Lakeview, I want everyone to experience success. I don't know what the answer is other than getting the right people in place, moving some of the people out of place, I agree. But, and, and, but I will tell you, if you leave these, if you give them the, and I'm going to go out on a limb, and, and I'm going to say this, you give Lakeview the resources, the manpower, and all, and the support next year and not do the Elevate, if they don't improve in their test scores, I will not run for this board again.
Ms. Mosley?
Thank you. I just want to point a clarification. I hear the IEP references. So, Dr. Royster, I don't know if this is a question for you or Ms. Hogan, but I have a little bit of experience with IEPs, and I also have a little bit of experience with behavior intervention plans. I also understand manifestation hearings. Is all of that taking place? Are we have, do we have enough behavior interventionists in place to?
Madam Chairman, the audience stops, so we'll clear the room.
We need to refrain from making comments or noises. We have speakers. Let's respect each other. Thank you very much.
I, I guess I'm, I, I understand how an IEP protects a child to a degree, but I also know plenty of children on IEPs that have been removed from school.
That is correct.
And so what I'm trying to understand is, to what degree are things like this being put into place? Because it's not enough to just have an IEP. Within the IEP, you have to have a behavior intervention plan, and then within the behavior intervention plan, you have to have every single person that touches that child, I say touches, meaning comes in contact with that child, has to follow that behavior intervention plan consistently. And, and then once they, and it's one behavior at a time is addressed. Behavior intervention plan only does one behavior at a time. So if the child has five behaviors, you have to go, you do one at a time. And then if there's a suspension because of behavior, a parent has a, right, we have, we have a manifestation hearing process, manifestation of disability, for example, is what I'm referring to. So I don't know who needs to answer that question, but I hear that being an issue, and I would kind of like to know how, how that's working.
I'll start, and Ms. Hogan may need to fill in more details. To your point, we have students that have those plans throughout the district. They're present in every school, certainly present in every middle school. We have some number of behavior interventionists. We've already heard tonight, we've got a number of jobs open at Lakeview that we can't fill. Part of what's compelling us to try to attract people there are UPE. Well, Ms. Hogan, you did a really, really good job of talking about the behavior plans and how they operate, and you're absolutely correct. We, we remove students, we have removed them, having followed their IEP and the behavior plan. Hogan, you want to speak a little more detail to that?
I just concur. Ms. Mosley, you did a very good job of explaining that. I'm not sure that everybody always understands that even when a student is protected under federal law, they still do have to adhere to the discipline. We have 10 days that we utilize with all students before there has to be a meeting to consider their disability and how it's impacted. I think sometimes that's not always understood, but we do have the same discipline rules that we use at, at all of our schools and the same protocol for our manifestation determination, and for the teams to look at that.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, are we, are we following these plans with fidelity at the school? I mean, is there any way to know that?
Well, we have special education specialists that support all of our schools that work with the teams at the school. We do have vacancies at Lakeview, but we have vacancies at many schools throughout the district. And so, yes, we supervise those. We have a secondary director and an elementary director that help look at that. We have our monitoring and compliance audits that we look at, but I mean, I don't have a specific concern of a school to say this school is not following their behavior intervention plans. I, I don't, I don't have any, any other concerns at these schools versus any other schools in the district, if that helps.
Okay, so earlier today, I asked the question to Dr. Royster about what this looks like if, if we were to not approve this tonight. And so my question is, what do we do? Because my understanding, if I'm under, is it a year and a half or two years? I'm not, I don't, I didn't really quite get the clear, the state would take over the school if there's certain, if there's not a certain amount of progress made. And so I asked the question earlier today in a workshop to you, Dr. Royster, of what does that look like when a state takes over a school? So maybe you can share your thoughts on that.
Well, the first question, when we talked about this at the committee of the whole, at that point, we were talking about two years because the state had not released this year's test scores, because they'd not fully conducted their analysis of them. We now have one year. And it's not improving. The improvement for that school has to exceed the improvement for other schools. So it can't just improve its way out. We do not have a good track record of significant improvement or sustained improvement there. What we'd be left with, obviously, we're not going to just throw up our hands and walk away from it and let the state have it. We'll have to make some changes there. We'll have to be tempered by, can we attract people, well-qualified, experienced people to come there? Because obviously, that determines how many people we may need to, to move from there. We've got to make some changes there. Changes have to occur. Otherwise, we're going to continue to get the same results. And, and I think it's important to emphasize, again, we're not talking about having compared this school to schools with different demographics, different socioeconomic status. They're in the status they're in, having been compared to other schools like them. That's the comparison we do, but more importantly, that's the comparison the state does. What does the state takeover look like? We don't really know. Because the state has not yet taken over an individual school. And what it looks like when they take over an individual district, they've done that. They go in and replace leadership in that district. They replace a number of other people, and the state superintendent of education determines what goes on in that school district, not the local board. There is a local administration, but that local administration is selected by the state superintendent and reports to them. So in essence, we're handing over, that happens, the future of that school to the State Department.
Okay.
Don't know exactly how they're going to approach that. There's some, there's certainly some reasonable question, and I don't know that Mr. Webb is, I don't think he's had an opportunity to research that. If they could go in there and remove everybody from that school and reconstitute the school, we just don't know because they've never done it before. I believe, based on our brief conversations about it, the state, they would prefer we find a solution to it than them take it over.
Yeah, I'm the resource.
Again, we're at a point, continuing to do what we've done is not being effective. That doesn't mean that there aren't people there that are effective, doesn't mean that at all. But we do not have the right combination of things in place there to get them out of that status, not current, not operating as we currently do.
Okay, so my last question to your point, because you've had, my understanding is you've had conversations with the state about this plan, this proposal.
I actually had a conversation, I've had two conversations with the state superintendent about it.
So, so just so that I'm understanding the math, if we do nothing, we are one year away from potential takeover. If we implement this program, is the state going to give us, because this is, I think you said a three-year pilot, correct?
Yes.
Okay, is the state then going to add, give us the three years to see?
We have not directly asked that.
Again, please refrain from making comments or gestures. Let's be respectful of all members here today.
But we believe it provides us with an effective and persuasive argument to avoid that takeover. By saying to them, look, we're, we're putting this in place. We set it up, it's approved, with an approval to run it for, really to run it for four years, but to get us three years' worth of data. Let us try this. It could then become an effective takeover model for them. Because we're, this is not going to be just this school in the state, there will be some others. They also had an interest in how that might be applicable to an entire district, because they already have districts that they have taken over. So there was significant interest there without there being some absolute commitment.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Stiles.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Mr. Sailors?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Dr. Royster, if I remember correctly, a few years ago, we initiated the AVID program here. Can you comment on its track record?
Yes, sir. The national track record for AVID is, is excellent. The research around it supports its implement, when it's implemented with rigor and fidelity, supports that, and shows that it benefits those students involved in it. We have three schools, middle school level, that have implemented AVID. Lakeview, the longest period of time, for three years. Tanglewood for one, Mr. McCoy, or Berea has two and Tanglewood has one. Unfortunately, the ones with less years in it have gone further in its implementation than Lakeview, which was the original school, as far as progressing through the implementation.
Then that leads me to my next question. When you're talking about comparing Lakeview to other schools of similar demographics, that's essentially Berea and Tanglewood, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
And are they performing higher, stronger, whatever word you choose to use?
Yes, sir. They're, one, they're not positioned where Lakeview is, they're not in CSI, they're not in it, they're not in CSI for the second cycle. CSI is a three-year period.
For the benefit of everyone in the audience, CSI is?
It's the state's designation for lowest-performing schools in the state. The bottom 5% of Title I schools in the state.
And then earlier this evening, it was referenced, the news showed recently where Lakeview went from unsatisfactory to below average. But that growth alone cannot pull them out of that status in one year's period of time, am I correct?
No, sir. Now, growth over two years might not pull them out of that status, because they have to grow more than the other schools in the bottom 5% of Title I. Right now, their growth is not matching the growth of those other schools, at least not this year.
You mentioned earlier that not every, essentially, nobody's going to lose a job. Other, some, some, some of the instructional staff and administrators may be reassigned, but there's no movement here to eliminate an employee's status as an employee with the school system. They just may be transferred to another school and someone brought into Lakeview. Can you tell, can you explain in a little greater detail the process that could be used if this is approved to identify who the teaching staff would be?
Yes, sir. Your statement is correct. We would open it up to application outside the district, inside the district, and inside the school, all simultaneously. They would go, those individuals would go through an interview process. If they're in a core subject-tested area, part of that would be looking at their performance, their students' performance in those areas. It would be looking at other aspects of their evaluation as far as the type of teacher they are, what their strengths are, what their weaknesses are, and from that point, select those individuals that would best fit what needs to happen there. We've got multiple individuals that have been in that building repeatedly, very experienced, very well-qualified teachers that have been in that building for more than one year, who have observed, I think without exception, every teacher in that building. So we have the two, the local administration's observation, our academic personnel's observation, and we have test score performance, and even this year, we would have the performance on their assessments that they did before the tests, a benchmark testing.
So it's also fair to state that this program, if implemented, also adds additional focus on not only mental health for the students and the staff, but also for discipline, which is an issue that is of concern.
Yes, sir. I share with the board a fairly in-depth summary of what constitutes an effective discipline We talked about that briefly earlier. There are multiple aspects to it. One, from the, from the top down, you've got to have an expectation and a framework for discipline. You've got to have school-wide rules that are clear, reasonable, and that they're consistently enforced within every classroom. Got to have a clear set of expectations that meet the same criteria. They're clear, they're reasonable, they're consistently enforced. You've got to analyze where you have issues and problems, and look at where disciplinary infractions occur. Are they occurring in a classroom, are they occurring in a hallway, are they occurring in a lunchroom, are they occurring before school, after school, are they occurring when they get off the bus, are they occurring when they're waiting on their ride? Analyze every location and every period of time during the day to determine where you have potential issues. You then ensure that you have adequate supervision in place in all those areas. That supervision has to be consistent. There has to be expectations that are consistently enforced for behavior in those areas. There might be restrooms during class change, hallways, again, before school, after school, the entire day, not just the instructional day, the entire day. You also want to make sure that there's a component of counseling and attempt to modify behavior, not in lieu of discipline, but as a follow-up to having imposed a sanction. but as a follow-up to having imposed a sanction for discipline. Then you've got to make certain, the point was made earlier, that if you have students on these behavior modification plans, that you're consistently and appropriately following. That you're using what resources you have to bring to bear to those situations. Then you've got to make certain that within your classroom, if you're a classroom teacher, that you've got appropriate activities planned for that lesson, for that day, for those students. That you keep them engaged, that you vary the activities that you do with them. All those things that we know that are tenants of good teaching. You also got to have the adults in the building model the behavior you expect for students. You expect them to be on time, you need to be on time. If the doors are supposed to open to the school at 7:45, the doors need to be open every morning at 7:45. You'll start a program at a certain time, you start the program at that time. You'll start a practice at a certain time, start a practice at that time. You start class when the bell rings to start class, and you stop teaching when the bell rings to stop teaching. If I'm the principal, or I'm the assistant principal, or I'm a teacher or counselor, I expect students to be on time, they'll be on time every day. I need to be early every day. Those are, in short, those frameworks that you need to have in place to have an effective discipline system. I know those things will work. They all operate in concert and in partnership with each other. Because I've seen them work, and I've seen them tremendously decrease disciplinary referrals and disciplinary problems in schools.
What in this plan allows for increased interaction, encouragement, engagement with parents in the community?
That needs to be a primary responsibility. Every Title I school has a Title I facilitator. That needs to be one of the primary responsibilities of that particular position.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sailors. Ms. Doolan.
Thank you. Dr. Royster, to use 4.5 million from the general fund fund balance, is that considered reoccurring expenses?
No, because that would fund the one-year bonus payments. And that amount assumes that every person would earn the maximum bonus they could earn in both schools every year. So the only recurring cost would be, we put a four-year span on the program. That covers the four years of bonus, the max amount that could possibly be paid out.
So because it's a pilot and for four years, it doesn't count as recurring expense?
That would be correct.
So there's, there would be no effect on the district's credit rating?
No. You have certainly sufficient fund balance. And next month, you'll get a report from our external auditors that will add to that fund balance in an amount greater than the $4.5 million.
My other question is that if, if the district needs to supply a plan to the Department of Education, is there a due date on that plan?
There is, Mr. McCoy.
Regarding to the improvement plan that we talked about for the schools that were unsatisfactory and below average?
Well, or that this pilot program would be part of the plan?
Speak to the deadlines for the, for, for, the most aggressive of these two, which would be like?
Yeah, so every year, we are required, as part, when a school is designated as CSI, we are required to submit plans. They have to go through community feedback, all of that as well. So that's any school that's a CSI priority school. In addition to that, those schools we talked about today, they have to have a turnaround plan. There's a template from the State Department, a turnaround plan that will have to go in place for those schools. And the due date to the State Department for approval is January 15th. Schools have, they have one, they have 30 days to complete the process of community meetings, feedback, putting that plan together to get it to the superintendent and ultimately to the board trustees.
What further complicates that is we can't, we do not know which schools will be required to do that until, I believe this year, we got the data on October the?
I think it was 15th when it went public.
15th. So then all those actions that are required, we have to put in place after October the 15th to meet the January the 15th deadline.
But this Elevate pilot program plan, to present it to the state, is also due January 15th?
If we wish to submit that in consideration for our plan of what we're gonna do at those schools, which we do, then yes, it has to be submitted by January the 15th.
That's it, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Doolan. Mr. Cochran.
Thank you, Ms. Stiles. Alexander Elementary, this past year, increased the number of students either meeting or exceeding expectations in both language arts and mathematics. So their standardized test scores are going up. They improved their rating on the South Carolina State Report Card. The state of South Carolina now considers them to be an average school, which is two levels up from unsatisfactory. Based on those recent improvements and the fact that Alexander Elementary is not in immediate danger of a state takeover, I do not support including Armstrong Elementary in the process of upheaval that would be required to implement, implement the Elevate program there. Thank you. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Cochran. Any other questions or comments? I'll come back here in just a moment, Ms. Lavenas Wells. Let me get to Ms. Goodwin-Cowall.
Thank you, Dr. Stiles. Dr. Royster, do we know what the PD is gonna look like at these schools? Because we know that behavior is an issue. We need classroom management PD. We need all of those things in order for the teachers to teach in those classrooms. Do we know what the PD, I knew, I know that whenever you gave us the plan, that they would have PD during the summer, which would be an extra $2,000. Is that, that, that's for a whole week? So what does that look like? Will it address all of these issues in order for the teachers to teach?
Well, if Mr. McCoy speaks to specifics, it certainly would include disciplinary framework and the importance of that and classroom management. But also instructional framework. Mr. McCoy?
Yes, ma'am. The, the big part of what we've done over the years already, which has set us up for success in the Title I schools, is to do several days. And part of that would be that week of planning to get ready for that first nine weeks of school. So getting the units in place, getting the lessons in place. As far as the discipline piece that you mentioned as well, that we want to get input from the faculty council. The faculty council would be in place, needs to have some input on that discipline plan. What is a, you know, school-wide discipline plan? It may be things that they're doing right now they want to continue doing, or new things that they want to try to do. So some of the PD that week is actually going to be shaped by that faculty council once it's on board. They need to have input into that professional development that week.
Okay, what is the timeline if this is, if this program is, is approved? What is the timeline to getting staff in place for next year? Because it'd be the 24, 25 school year, right?
Yes, correct.
What is the timeline?
Obviously, as quickly as we can get it off the ground. If it's approved tonight, we begin pushing out information about it tomorrow. For HR purposes, we would want to get these, the school staffing done January, February, if at all possible. Because it obviously then has implications to, possibly to other schools. We also, you may recall, we have a number of people employed as, through ESER, particularly as interventionists in reading and math. Those people will need to be placed somewhere. So we've got to make sure we have places for them as well. Some of them may very well, if this passes, may very well be interested in applying for this. It wouldn't just automatically be placed there. So January, February, because it does significantly affect the rest of our hiring process.
Okay. Like I said in the COW, what we've been doing in this district for the last couple of decades with some of the schools on the west side, I'm so glad that we are finally addressing the schools that have, have the lowest performance in the state. And we do not want the state to come in and take over our schools. If you, if you look at back when the state had to take over Allendale, they couldn't even do the job that Allendale did, so they gave it back. So, you know, we, we, but we don't want, we do not want the state to have to come in and try to take over this school. So we need a change. I know change is hard for educators because I'm a, I'm a educator. I'm a retired educator. And I was in Cherrydale that our kids fed into Lakeview. So, and, and we've always said that we needed something different because our school up there was not performing. And when we looked at those scores today, and I see them in single digits, yeah, something different needs to be done, and it needs a change. And if this is the change that it needs for us to get those, get that school moving, or those schools moving, then I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin-Cowall. Ms. Linda Lavenas Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I keep hearing that we're gonna get all these people in these schools, and we're gonna hire this person, and we're gonna implement this, and we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do that. Why haven't we done that already? Why haven't we put these resources, filled these positions that are vacant? Do all the things that we are talking about doing? Why haven't we, why, why are we waiting till January? Why not help these teachers and the staff at these schools? Put the personnel in there now. Get these people hired. Get this French teacher hired. Get this person hired. I just want to ask one last question, Dr. Royster. You're talking about, you know, seasoned teachers. I understand that, and people that are close to retirement. This would boost their retirement pay, $5,000, and then a bonus, if they do well, $3,000. Can we actually do that? Can we actually add $5,000 to every teacher's salary? And it, I mean, has that, is that something the state's gonna approve? I mean, have we ever looked into that?
They didn't have to approve it. You pay teachers whatever you select to pay them. You cannot go below the state's minimum. We pay it as a supplement, so it does not obligate you beyond the four-year period of time.
So you do it as a supplement? All right, then.
Thank you, Ms. Lavenas Wells. Ms. Middleton?
Thank you. So I'm listening here, and I must admit, for the past week, I have been very conflicted. Because I've gotten lots of emails from people, and I haven't gotten any emails saying that they feel positive about the Elevate program, which I've mentioned that, Dr. Royster, is just really bothering me. But I do know that change is very hard. And I do want to just emphasize and ask again, if a teacher has a good performance appraisal review recently, and is a good teacher, and that teacher is interviewed for the job, and all other things being equal, can that teacher feel confident that they will sort of have a leg up, which is what is normal in the private world, if you've been in the job, and that they could qualify for the job, Dr. Royster?
All other things being equal, the preference would go to the person that's already there.
Sorry, what?
All other things being equal, to make sure I understood your statement, the preference would go to the person that's already there.
So if they have a good review and they've done a good job, then they can be feeling good, they probably will get the position.
Also would include, if they're in a tested subject area, the performance results of their students on their most recent test, up to and including the benchmarks given this year.
Another thing I'm very concerned about is discipline. And we've talked about this quite a bit now. I feel that I don't, in my own experiences, having been a former high school teacher and having some very difficult classes, and understanding that no matter how good a teacher is, if there's a discipline problem in the school or in their classroom, they will not be able to be successful. I feel that's, I feel very strongly about that. So I feel that you're telling me that there will be a focus on discipline through the assistant principal or whoever the disciplinarian is to ensure that these teachers can function and can be successful, and that will make a difference.
You cannot carry out instruction without a discipline, a structure and discipline. But that requires all working in partnership to achieve it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Middleton. Last call for questions. All right. Before we move on to, to a decision about this, I just wanted to point out that on the printout, one name was left out, did not show up on the printout. But he did sign up before the time was up. And I want to give him an opportunity to speak prior to our decision. Mr. Paul Korski, is he still here? Thank you.
All of you at the table know me. I've been here before. My name's Paul Korski. And you all know that I've been on a school board before. So I've been here and done that. Now, I only want to talk about this particular issue because I don't think you all understand what is involved in incentive systems. I know you want to make improvement, and I understand that. But you don't understand what's involved with these things. I've got two thoughts. First of all, I can't believe the administration is saying that this is a teacher's problem. And if they say it's not, then why are we addressing the teachers? Second of all, okay? I have a long history in business and industry with a number of different companies. And I've worked with a number of different incentive systems. And I can assure you that if you put this incentive system in, it is going to kill the district, not the schools. It ain't gonna help them at all. But it's gonna take this district down. You don't know what you're dealing with. And I'm telling you, it's not gonna work. You, you, you say it's not the teachers, but incentivizing them is not the answer, believe me. Based on my experience, in the past, with a similar situation, this will have a big impact on the next elections. And it seems to me that the public is definitely getting more and more involved with your schools.
Thank you, Mr. Korski. Does this mean, this motion came from the committee of the whole? It does not require a second? Again, I'm gonna give. Yes, Ms. Doolan.
Thank you. I wonder if I could propose that we meet again to discuss this and tweak some of the details about this before we vote? I feel like our board is split. Community is clearly not in favor. Community is clearly not in favor. And I wonder if it wouldn't serve us better to reconvene with the administration to talk about some changes.
Are you making this in the form of a motion?
Do I need to offer this as a substitute motion? Oh, my gosh, yes. Motion to reconvene to discuss this at a later date.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Oh, Mr. Saylor.
Dr. Royster, if we do this, what's it going to accomplish? What else is there to change?
I'm not sure. You know, you obviously would not attempt to speak for Ms. Doolan. Spent two years putting this together. We tried to consider every factor out there. There's nothing at this point that we might offer, that we believe would be something that would add value to what we proposed. Might adjust the amount of the actual pay for being assigned to the school or working at the school. We can do that inside of Title I, but that doesn't even do with the framework. There's nothing that we've identified, because we've gone back and made a number of changes. You notice there are a few in there that are different from there were in Cal, including some people that weren't included before. I know of no substantive change that we could just simply offer up.
How long will it take us to compile the data and make the correct submission to the State Department to meet the January 15 deadline? Because this is not a piece of paper you just fill out and send it in the mail.
That's true. All the things that we have to do.
Days.
Say again, Mr. McCoy?
Has to be done in 30 days. The turnaround plan has to be done in 30 days for the...
30 days from now.
30 days from October the 15th.
Well, it's actually October 18th when we got...
October the 18th.
30 days from October the 18th.
November the 18th.
If we were to include this in...
So, we've got one meeting between now and then, and if we kick this beer can down the road one more week, that's one less week you've got to get your work accomplished. Am I correct?
That's correct.
You know, we're, we're paid to be up here and make tough decisions. Let's make the tough decision and move on. I'm through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. Ms. Doolan, would you like to move forward with that motion? Would you repeat the motion, please?
Sorry, I don't remember exactly what I said. Motion to propose that we meet again at a later date to tweak this plan, so that we can all be in agreement when it's passed.
We have a second to the substitute, oh, we have a, we have a comment?
Amanda, Amanda second.
Okay, okay. Amanda Brett, second the motion. All in favor, say...
Question on the substitute motion. She did not give a defined time. She just said that we meet again.
Thank you.
So, I just want to make sure.
Ms. Doolan, let's try the substituted motion again, this time where they...
I think you would have to vote that one down technically, and then renew a substitute motion from there.
Do, what is the next date that we'll all be together anyway? Is that in two weeks? November 14th isn't enough time. When's the next advocacy?
After the superintendent's evaluation on the 7th.
We'll be here then.
After the, after that advocacy meeting, I'm gone. I can't speak for the rest of our colleagues.
Ms. Doolan, are you ready to move forward with making a recommendation? A substitute motion?
I'll withdraw my substitute.
Okay, we...
If we can...
Okay, the motion is withdrawn?
Just, just for a point of order, there needs to be a vote, given that it was seconded.
Okay. Okay, Mrs. Doolan, she, she, again, she decided that she does not want to move forward with the substitute motion. We need a second for that?
It's already been seconded, so now there actually needs to be a vote, if the board wishes to vote it down.
Okay. All in favor of...
The substitute motion as presented?
The substitute motion as presented, say aye. All opposed, no?
No.
All right, the motion carries. No. Okay. All right. Now, we're going to go back to the original motion, and the original motion, which came from the Committee of the Whole, was to move forward with the motion. I'm going to read the motion one more time, just so that there's no confusion. We have a recommended motion from the Committee of the Whole to approve the Elevate Incentive Program Model Concept and designate $4.5 million from general fund balance to provide the difference in compensation and bonus outside of the Title I allocation for that purpose of the four-year pilot program. Okay? All in favor of the...
Roll call.
Okay, we're going to have a roll call vote. So, I will ask Ms. Gail Fortner if she will call the roll, please.
Brett?
No.
Ms. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Cochran?
No.
Doolan?
No.
Ms. Goodwin-Cowall?
Yes.
Ms. Lavenas-Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Middleton?
Yes.
Morrison-Fair?
Yes.
Ms. Mosley?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Mr. Saylor's?
Yes.
Dr. Stiles?
Yes.
Eight-four, the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is 5.02 Innovative Course Approvals. We have a recommended motion from the Committee of the Whole to approve the local board courses as presented. This motion does not require second. Any discussion?
Anne Murray. You don't have to defend your vote. Don't worry about it.
Any discussion?
Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no.
The motion carries. Our next action item is 5.03 Instructional Material Review Committee Pool Members. We have a recommended motion from the Committee of the Whole to approve and appoint the 2023 through 2026 Instructional Review Committee Pool. This motion does not require second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries. Our next action item...
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
We're having a little bit of difficulty. If they'll shut the, wait just a minute, and they'll shut the doors, then we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next action item is 5.04 SC/SA delegates. We have a recommended motion from the Committee of the Whole to certify the state of delegates with each trustee named as both a delegate and an alternate, and with the chair assigned three votes and the remaining trustees two each. This motion does not require second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Our next action item is 5.05 Revision of Board Policy IDBA Gavin's Law. We have a recommended motion from the Committee of the Whole to approve the revisions to board policy IDBA as presented.
Madam Chairman, this is from the administration.
Oh, excuse me, from the administration. I'm sorry, my mistake. This motion does not require second. Any discussion?
Madam Chairman, it requires a motion, because it did not...
Yes, I need a maker of the motion. I'm sorry.
Madam, it's okay. Madam Chairman, I've moved to approve the revisions to board policy IDBA as presented.
We have a motion from Mr. Saylor's, or second from Mrs. Doolan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries. Our next action item is 5.06 First Steps Board Nomination. We have a recommended motion from the Committee of the Whole to appoint Dr. Susan Stevens to represent Greenville County Schools on the Greenville First Steps Board of Directors. This motion does not require a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries. Our next action item is 5.07 Commissioners of Public Works Easement at the New Elementary School on the Old JL Man High School site, which is 61 Isbell Lane. We have a recommended motion from the Committee of the Whole to approve a water line easement as requested by the Commission of Public Works at the New Elementary School on the Old JL Man site. This motion does not require a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries. Our next action item is 5.08 Upstate Greenways and Trails Alliance Permanent and Perpetual Easement and Right-of-Way Request at Bryson Elementary School. We have a recommended motion from the Committee of the Whole to approve the Upstate Greenways and Trails Alliance Permanent and Perpetual Easement and Right-of-Way at Bryson Elementary School. This motion does not require a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries. Our next action item is 5.09 Upstate Greenways and Trails Alliance Permanent and Perpetual Easement and Right-of-Way Request at Fountain Inn High School. We have a recommended motion from the Committee of the Whole to approve the Upstate Greenways and Trails Alliance Permanent and Perpetual Easement and Right-of-Way at Fountain Inn High School. This motion does not require a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries. Our next action item is 5.10 Physical Education Exemption. We have a recommended motion from the administration to approve a physical education exemption for one student at Malden Middle School. Do I have a maker of the motion?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve the physical education exemption for one student at Malden Middle School.
Mrs. Mosley has made a motion. Mrs. Doolan has made a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries. Our next action item is 5.11 Employee Grievance Appeal. We have a recommended motion from the administration to deny the request for a hearing of the employee grievance appeal and affirm the administration's response to the grievance. Do I have a maker of the motion?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the administration's recommendation.
Mr. Saylor's has made a motion. Do I have a second? Mrs. Bush has made a second. All in, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries. Our next action item is 5.12 Legal Representation of an Employee. We have a recommended motion from administration to approve providing legal representation to the named employee in accordance with board policy GAEA in the matter of 2023-CP-23-05019. Do I have a maker of the motion?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to accept the administration's recommendation.
Mr. Saylor's has made the motion. Do I have a second? Mrs. Bush has made a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. The motion carries. Our final action item is 5.13 Engagement of Outside Counsel for a Teacher Hearing. We have a recommended motion from myself, the chair, to approve the hiring of Dove, Freeman, and Lyon to advise the Board of Trustees pertaining to the teacher appeal hearing scheduled for October 30th, 2023. Do I have a maker of the motion?
Madam Chairman, you made the motion, and I'll second it.
Okay, I made the motion. Mr. Saylor's, you'll second it, okay? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries. Our next agenda item is Committee Liaison Reports. Do we have any committee members who would like to share at this time? Ms. Middleton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Several of us went to the federal advocacy conference in Washington, DC on September 25th through September 27th. That was many of the state boards. We met with representatives and senators in the Capitol. Specifically, we met with Senator Lindsey Graham, and he told us at that time, because the government was getting ready to shut down, that they're all funding, all our federal funding would be flat. There'd be no increases and no decreases. So, that was the Individuals with Disabilities Program, and also Title I. He did say that parents should feel free to call his office, and the more people that call, the more activity, sometimes, sometimes that helps. So, I relayed that. We also talked to the staffer for Senator Scott, Mr. Timmons, and James Clyburn. James Clyburn talked about some money that we got, not Greenville County, but Clemson University, and also USC got money to, so that people can obtain advanced degrees in counseling, health counselors, and they can come back to teach at Greenville County Schools. And that would be paid for, possibly, or at least part of it. It would be a scholarship-type program, and they would just have to commit to three years to Greenville County Schools. So, that was a plus for us, I think, with our partnership with Clemson. Clemson got $675,000, and USC got $600,000. So, that was, that was what happened during that meeting.
Thank you so much for sharing, Ms. Middleton. Do we have anyone else who'd like to report out on their committee work? Okay, thank you. Our final agenda item is the monthly finance report. Dr. Royster, do you have anything to share there?
You'll have a full monthly financial report at the end of next month, and we should also have the external auditors report at the Committee of the Whole, for them to present at that time for your approval later in the month. And if you have any questions, finance-related, there's nothing unusual as far as revenue. It's coming in basically in line with projection, as it customarily does for this time of the year.
Thank you, Dr. Royster. Does anybody have a question in regard to the finance? Okay, all right. This concludes our agenda. Again, thank you for every, everyone for your presence tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Saylor's, I will call on you. Thank you.
I'll refer to Mrs. Mosley. She beat you.
All right. Mrs. Mosley, I couldn't hear who said that. I heard it from a lot of places. Okay, all right. Okay, Mrs. Mosley has made a motion, and Mrs. Goodwin-Cowell has made a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries. We are adjourned at 9:06.